Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Under roll call, we'll note that we have all board members here tonight. Moving to executive session announcements, I'd like to announce that we will be holding an executive session immediately following tonight's board meeting to discuss potential And I do not have any public comments, but before we move forward, does anybody wish to make public comments at this time? I saw a hand. Come on up. You can sit at the mic there.
My name is Jenny Donovan, and I've been a community member at Pots Grove since 1981. All four of my children have graduated from Pots Grove. I come before you this evening for relief for life of Pottstown. I've been a team captain for 20 years, all 20 relays starting at the Hill School. And I understand recently, the first in August, there was discussion about our relay and the American Cancer Society, and it was also brought up again in January. So I come before you asking, I believe Mrs. Grimm was the one who had suggested a subcommittee meeting with the relay folks and also the American Cancer Society. So I have two questions that I pose for you. Has a subcommittee been put together, and when can we meet? Because the more we find out your concerns and your questions, and we come together, that's how we're all going to learn what the relay is, what the American Cancer Society is. So I'm wondering if anyone can answer those two questions so we can move forward and educate each other.
Actually, Jenny, I'm glad you came.
Thank you.
But I didn't request the subcommittee.
Oh, you didn't?
No, no, because I am 100% for it, and everybody here knows that.
Thank you.
So I'll do whatever I can to keep it here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, just so you know, but I don't think there's been a subcommittee or anything. There's some suggestions, I think.
So how can we move forward on it? Because, I'll be honest, it's something that I believe very strongly in. My family has been involved, my personal family has been involved since 1965, when my grandmother had cancer, and the American Cancer Society helped her. At this particular moment, the American Cancer Society is also helping my sister. I have a 52-year-old sister who has brain cancer and stage IV lung cancer. One lung is completely gone to cancer. And I fully believe in the relay and the American Cancer Society. And I really would like to see Pots Grove embrace this wonderful organization. So if we could have some sort of a committee that we can meet privately and come together so that we answer your questions, and you can answer our questions, you know, that maybe we would have.
So I'll just, I could give you a quick update on where we are.
Sure.
Yes, to answer your question, we actually hadn't considered a subcommittee only by the fact that I thought that it would be a full board involvement.
Okay. I must have misread that then in the mercury.
Well, we did talk about, we did talk about a subcommittee, but what the plan was, and we have been in contact with people from the American Cancer Society.
Yes, I'm aware that last, we reached out to you asking, and we were told that it was a budget committee.
Right, we had a budget presentation, it was going to be a long meeting, so what we asked was, and just to be clear, everything is safe for this year, and, you know.
Oh, I'm not concerned about this year.
I mean, there were just some questions raised, and I think it's, you know, it's everybody's right to ask the questions, and I think it's great that they're willing to come out and help people to understand.
Right.
So we do have it in the plan that sometime in the, as the budget season wears down and we start to hammer that out.
Okay.
That we'll have somebody come in, or some bodies come in.
Okay.
And have them answer questions, and absolutely, if they have questions, then we'll be happy to.
Sure. And let me ask you just a timeframe, what, when does budget really calm down?
Right.
Okay, because.
But I would say we'll be, the plan would be to do it in the spring, far before the end of the school year.
Well, because I, I've been, like I said, 20 years doing this, so I've sat on our board, as I sat on many boards here at Pots Grove during my time. And I know that we're always brought up about July, August, for approval for the following year, correct? So I don't want to see it go to that. I think what I've learned in life, and through my involvement at Pots Grove, the more knowledge that you have early, not presenting it in a meeting and then you voting, it's better to have it, and then think it through, have that month, and then vote on it. You know, when you do things so quickly, sometimes you miss things. Sometimes we don't hear things, quite frankly. So I would ask that you would give us plenty of time to be able to present things. I guess I misunderstood. I thought we were having a smaller atmosphere, not a big board meeting for the two sides coming together.
It may not be a board meeting, it might just be a workshop.
Okay.
But I think just because so many people ask questions, and we all, we all definitely have strong opinions.
Sure.
Some of us may be still be forming.
Sure, and that's why I'm saying.
It should be everybody, maybe in a workshop setting, not a full board meeting, not the first time, but absolutely.
Yeah.
And no, it won't wait until the middle of the summer, and there's no notice, nothing.
Right. Because if Pots Grove would not agree to host us anymore for whatever reason, obviously you see what it takes to put together relay, Mrs. Grimm knows what it takes to put together. It's not something you do in a month or two. I mean, being a team captain for 20 years, it can take me six months just to put on a breakfast with Santa Claus, and that's one little event. So a relay-for-life event is huge, and there's many pieces of the puzzle. So we just don't want to be, you know.
Understood.
Sure. So, thank you very much.
Jenny, just before you go, one thing I would like to just chime in on, I would like to see it be a board workshop. I don't really feel that the American Cancer Society should have to come here in public, because I can only imagine the questions that they would be fired at.
Sure.
And honestly, it would really be shameful. So I don't know, I know we're busy with the budget, but I do think that we could start this sooner than waiting. I know we're busy with the budget, but to do a workshop, I don't think it's anything to put together.
Sure.
So don't forget to keep me involved, in case I get lost in the loop.
I will, I'll reach out, because I kind of, since I've done it so long now, kind of have the complete history of what relay, you know, has been for us. And of course, on a personal end, unfortunately, I can speak for that, too. I literally left Pottstown Hospital to be here, from my sister, she's admitted right now. So I would like to be a part of it, on many different levels, so, you know, if we could just keep in touch.
Well, I'm going to chime in now.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that as one of the people who did raise some questions at the board meeting in August, I've taken quite a bit of time to reflect on the various components of the relay. And A, I want to say that I'm 100% in favor of approving it for the next year, despite the questions that I raised. And B, I don't personally believe that raising questions, whether in public or private, are shameful, and I reject that notion very strongly. We're all in this together.
Sure.
All of us have had people in our families with cancer. My mother just got over cancer, her second round of it.
Yep.
And I don't believe there's a person in this room who doesn't have somebody close to them who's been through it. So I reject the shameful notion, but I look forward to the discussion, and, you know, the relay, I think, is great for our community and should continue.
Thank you. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And if I can just say, too, I do believe that the ACS should be at this workshop. There's no reason for them not to be.
Oh, sure, and I have kids not to interrupt.
Right, well Patty just said they don't need to be. I do believe they need to be.
Board meeting, she meant.
She wants questions.
Do it sooner, it's about, do it sooner to workshop.
Yes, they have, the American Cancer Society is willing to do anything. They are willing to answer any questions you have, and, you know, they're willing to do anything you would like, to have your questions 110% answered, so that we're all on the same page. So, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, it gives me a great honor tonight to, for the reporter, the superintendent, to have some special recognitions tonight. And first thing I'd like to do is talk tonight about the Pots Grove High School football team, who represent District 1 as our Quad A champions. That victory was an exciting overtime victory over heavily favored Inverboro team, and who entered the championship game with a record of 10-2. Although this team returned only a few starters from last year, they were able to blend their young talent with some experienced players for their third district title. It gives me great honor tonight to recognize this particular group, and I think that one thing that, for me, is very, very important, is the relationships that you as teammates build. And I'm just going to give you a real brief history, because I can, I guess, so. You know, you young men in the audience have a great leader in Coach Penny Packer. And I say that because I've had opportunity to know him for almost 30 years. And you in the room haven't quite been born that, you're not that old, obviously. But you're going to reflect back on the relationships that you've had with your coaches, especially your head coach, and you're going to take the opportunity to realize how important this time in your life was, and what the model of leadership has done for you. You're going to take this day in your career, at Pots Grove academically and athletically, and you're going to, you're going to use those tools the rest of your life. And the blessing for that is that you have a leader in Coach Penny Packer that has instilled that for a long, long time. And I just wanted to express for me, because I've known Coach for, like I said, almost 28 years, we've competed together, and yes, Coach, you've beat me more times than I beat you, okay, let's get it out there, I get that, that's all good stuff. But one of the things I can always say, in the competition that we had with one another, was the respect that we had for one another, and the ability to compete at a very high level, and those types of things have transferred for me through my entire life. It's work ethic, it's camaraderie, it's the rigor component, and it's things that you're never, ever going to forget. Tonight's going to be a quick blur for you, but when you have a chance to reflect on this night, and what you've done as a team and an organization, you're going to be very, very proud. So it's a great night for me, because I have an opportunity to work with someone like Coach Penny Packer. I've known him for many, many, many years. He hasn't changed a bit, as far as what he believes and what's right and best for kids. So obviously, you know that as parents, you know that as his players, and we want to see this continue for quite a long time. So it gives me a great honor and privilege tonight. We'd like to recognize you, and the jackets that the board has supported you into recognizing this championship. We have certificates for you as well, and we'd like Coach to come up and say a few words regarding this Quad A championship team.
These guys out here all know that when I start talking, I don't shut up, and I'll make it very brief, because Dr. Ziger is pointing to his watch at me. We want to thank the board for all the support you give us. These guys got jackets, plaques, we have the best uniforms and best equipment, and that doesn't go unnoticed by us, and we thank you for everything that you do for us. These kids out here, the one thing that a lot of people don't know are some of the things that happen behind the scene. They do a lot of community service, they do things that not many people know about. That's what I'm proud of them the most. They do, they set flags on graves during Veterans Day, they went down and helped Pottstown Senior Citizen Center move into their new home. They are going to go Thursday down to Lower Pots Grove, read across America. They do a lot of things that not a lot of people don't know about. That's what I'm proud of. The district championship's one thing, but the things that they do for the school and for the community, that's what makes me proud of them. And coaching for over 35 years, and Dr. Shirke, he was just as good a football coach as he is a superintendent, believe me. He was a very good football coach. But coaching for 35 years, it's, I'm very proud of this group of kids and the way they represent Pots Grove. So we want to thank you for everything you do for us. I think my captains, they want to come up and say anything? Ryan, do you want to say anything? Ryan will say a couple of words, and then we'll get out of here. Everybody knows Ryan Finn, our captain, and he's also our district champion in wrestling, so he'll probably be here soon.
Like Coach Penny Packer said, just on behalf of the football team and us players, thank you for the district jackets. It's great to know that we have a school board that supports our team, our athletic program, and football players, and it's a great thing for us to proudly wear our jackets in the school, and thank you.
These wooden bottles are for us. You can have a wooden bottle?
Yeah. I want to do this. I need a lot to check out.
Everybody, eat from the middle.
Yo.
No, 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 I got me, I have a beer all day.
Get some candy, too, you're a big boy, you need a lot.
All right, see you, thank you.
You're most welcome.
study, and we are going to start that with Mr. Nester, going over the current projections.
Thank you, Dr. Shirke. Tonight, we have our consultant calling in from Ohio. Her name is Tracy Healy from Future Think Incorporated. She's done an enrollment study for the Pots Grove School District, projecting the enrollment for the next 10 years, inclusive of potential housing developments that are proposed in our, in our neighborhood. So with that being said, I'm going to pass off to Mrs. Healy, and the one thing I want to stress to you is, she's probably not going to be able to hear your questions from the far side, so I'm going to act as translator to her over our cell phone, so please bear with us as we get through that process. With that being said, Tracy, we're ready to go.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for having me. It's my pleasure to be with you, at least via phone, and you can go through the PowerPoint, and then, as we said, ask questions after we get through that, that'll probably be the easiest way to do it, just because of the connection here. So if we can get started with the next slide. And first one's just a little bit about Future Think. We've been in operation for almost 11 years now. I am the owner and president, and have been in the business since the early 90s, as Future Think for the last 10 years. Next slide. Specialize in providing enrollment projections, and I have several long-term clients I've worked with. There are a few listed here, and actually worked back with your district back in 2009. So I'm glad to be back working with you again. Next slide. In terms of the enrollment projections, there are several factors that are considered in putting together. The first is obviously the historical enrollment. What's happened in the district over the past 10 years is, you know, an indicator of what may happen in the future, so that's the first thing we look at, is the historical enrollment. Secondly, we look at birth data, and this provides us with kind of a pool of potential future students. So we look at the number of births, and how that's trending over the last 15 years, so that we can see as a comparison to your kindergarten enrollment five, six years after that birth occurs. So we look at the birth data. We'll also look at some general population demographics, which is kind of what's happening generally in terms of population, what's happening in terms of economics in the area, and how that may impact enrollment. And of course, we look at housing development, as new housing is coming into the area, what may be the potential impact in the number of new students. And then we'll also look at the survival ratios, and that measures the movement of students through your system, grade to grade, year by year, and what that retention rate is as you move forward through those years. Next slide. In terms of methodology, and I wanted to point out, too, in the upper right-hand corner, you have kind of the page numbers, so if you're following along in your report as well, that's kind of where we're at. In terms of the methodology, what's been looked at was, we developed district-wide projections, as well as by-school projections. So I wanted to look at the district-wide first, giving us, you know, kind of the overall picture, and then look at how that impacts each of the elementary schools. We started with the cohort survival method as the primary methodology, measuring, you know, what I just talked about in terms of the survival ratios in that historical enrollment, grade to grade, year by year, and then incorporated the housing development into that cohort projection through the development of projection ratios. So look at how that housing may impact future enrollment and increase those ratios moving forward. Once the district-wide projections were completed, then looked at developing the by-school projections, and compared and reconciled this with the district-wide. The reason they start with the district-wide is that looking at, you know, a greater population, and those are going to have a higher level of accuracy. The smaller the group, the, you know, the harder it is to pinpoint exactly. So look at the overall picture first, and then develop those projections by-school afterward. Next slide. Looking at the historical enrollment, over the past 10 years, there's been an increase of 100 students, or 3%, and then over the last five years, the increase has been approximately 1%, so it's been pretty flat over the last five years overall. We've seen some changes, turn to the next slide, in the grade levels. So for grade K through 2, we have a enrollment this year of 763, which is one of the highest years, we had a high year of 771 in 2010-11, but so we've seen an increase over, you know, the past few years in terms of that K-2 enrollment. Same with the 3-5 enrollment. While we saw a peak in the 12, 13th school year, also 763, we've also, you know, almost returned to that level this year, 759 students. And we've seen a little bit of decline in the middle and high school levels, but fairly flat as time has gone on. So as we're seeing those elementary school increases, then as the students move through, obviously, they're going to start hitting in the middle and high school levels as we get into that, you know, late, in the later years of the 10-year projection. So keep that in mind as we move forward. Next slide. Shows the number of birth counts. We have the lowest number of birth counts in 2014, which is the last year available. We look at this from the Pennsylvania Department of Health, and what they do is look at the resident of the mother, so regardless of where the mom may have the baby, she goes outside of the county or outside of the township to have the baby, the birth is counted within the resident where she lives. So we have that broken down by lower, upper, and west Pots Grove townships. You can see what those totals are. So again, we want to look at this so we can get an idea of what kindergarten enrollment may look like five years later. So this year, kindergarten would approximately be born in 2011, which was a total of 260 births. As we saw in the previous slide, we had a, you know, 700, or, I'm sorry. I have to flip back here, my own. 243 for kindergarten this year, so kind of great, almost at 100% in terms of the number of births, and then the number of children that we saw in kindergarten five years later. Next slide. This slide just shows some general indicators of growth in wealth in the area. First table shows Montgomery County and Pennsylvania, just in terms of per capita income, median household income, and per constable poverty. Obviously, Montgomery County is in, you know, a higher wealth position and better economic position than the state overall. Terms of some of the census data for the county and Pottstown Borough and the township, seeing the modest growth in each of those areas over, over the 10-year census window, and then the 15-year estimate for 2015. Next slide. This shows S3 projections, which S3 is the group that has provided like the ARC GIS and Geographic Confirmation System Management. These look at, this is data that we actually purchased from them, to look at census block group. to look at census block group. So they take it to the lowest level that the census provides data. And we can roll that up to approximate the district as closely as possible. So while in the previous slide, we're looking at county and the township data, this shows what the Potsgrove district is. So on this first chart shows the total population, which is projected from an estimate of 2016 to a five-year projection of in 2021 of an increase of about 2% for the total populations in the district. And looking at it by ages 0 through 18, you see just a slight increase is projected of 32 students or less than 1% over that five-year window. But you can see there's some projected losses in the 0 to 9 each groups and then projected gains in the 10 to 14 and 15 to 18. So what they mentioned is we've seen those increases in that elementary levels of higher ed who move out in five years or so. Those are, you know, starting to move into the middle school grade. Next slide. This also shows S3 projections and also the median and average household income, average family size, and total family household, which are all projected to increase over that five-year window as well. Next slide shows all of this data in math. So as I said, it's linked to each census block group. So the first one looks at the total population growth and decline. So there's just a couple of little areas of red where there's a slight decline projected, but you can see the rest of the district is all projected to grow. And the light, light of green is from a 4.1 to 6% growth. And some of the yellows from 2% to 4%. And the orange is from a 2% or less percent growth. So you see around the district where there's projected growth and just some slight decline kind of right in that center area where that red is. The next slide shows for each of the 5th and 16th, sort of school age population and where those losses and declines are. You can see in the areas of light green, dark green, green, green. Those are areas where it's projected to increase. And the number of median age children in the red, red, orange, and yellow are showing some areas of loss. In the eastern portion, you know, southern portion, you see where that's kind of the biggest area where it's projected to increase by 8% or more. Next slide shows median age. This is for each of the areas. The light green is 35 to 40 age. That's kind of where the most in the district. And on the next slide, it shows in 2021 what it's projected to be. So we see that light green heading and the yellow becoming more. So as people age those five years, they're now looking at more 40 to 45 for each population. And the next slide shows current estimated median income. See, the dark green is greater than $100,000. And then it goes down to areas of red where it's under $60,000. So again, kind of see in and around the district where those areas of greater wealth are. And the next slide shows the production for 2021, where those all increased greatly so as we move forward those five years. See how that changes over time. Through the next slide, it shows the number of building permits. We saw the total peak in 2006, right? While we're still kind of in the housing boom. And then see in 2009, 2010, kind of entered the housing bust as we've gone forward where those dipped quite significantly. And over the past four years, we're starting to see, I think, some signs of recovery. And based on the housing developments that, you know, are expected to occur in the area, we, you know, see more housing probably to come as we move forward. The next slide shows those housing developments. Saratoga Green, which is projected to have a total of 503 units, broken out with studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom townhomes. There's also Spring Valley Farms, which is 178 units of three and four-bedroom homes. And then in Upper Potsgrove, there's talk of a development of 58 units occurring, but at this time, no approvals are in place. But I wanted to include that on some potential development as well, see how that may move forward. Next slide shows the survival ratios. This is measuring the movement of students, as I mentioned, from grade to grade, year by year. As we look at all the survival ratios for the movement from K to 1 through 11th to 12th grade, on the average, they equal or exceed 100%. So that means that all the students that were there the previous grade typically show up the next year. And in many cases, you have more students than you had the previous year in those grade levels. There is a couple of exceptions, grades 1 to 2, where the average over the last 10 years was about 99%. So right, you just pointed at that 100%. And actually, for this year, it was 104%. So you actually had a few more second graders than you did first graders last year. And then 10 to 11 is typical. Except, I haven't seen a district where it equals on average over 100% just because of the way some of the credits count for students terms of where, when they're classified during the year as either a tenth or eleventh grader. And it follows their students who leave to pursue like at another school or vocational school or something like that. There's usually, there can be a little bit of a drop off there. But on the average, we're seeing, you know, 100% or more retention moving forward within the grade. The next slide, we have the first projected enrollment. This is showing the district-wide most likely with an increase of 8% or 100, or 262 students, okay, in grades K through 12. And then looked at that also by grade group and by school. So we looked at an increase of 13 students, I'm sorry, in the next slide, in pre-K through, or K through 12, I'm sorry, I just mentioned K-12. 40 students increased in grades 3 through 5, 58 in grades 6, 8, and 151 students in grades 9 through 12. As I mentioned, as, you know, we're seeing those bigger class sizes currently in the elementary as we move out in the, in the 10th year period or even in the high school. The next slide shows what's, what's Potsgrove Elementary School. So the first table shows the historical enrollment and, you know, how that's changed. So currently, the enrollment, 293. We have the projected enrollment at 286 in the 10th year. So clearly flat in terms of the enrollment there. Next slide shows that Rainy Rock. We see the current enrollment of 470 students. And we have a projected enrollment of 490 in the 10th year. So slight increase of about 20 students there. And then at Lower Potsgrove, we currently have 759 students in grades 3 through 5 and are projected 799 in the 10th year. An increase of 40 students at Lower Potsgrove Elementary School. This is a moderate or most likely projection. We also provided low and high. Let's go to the next slide and give a quick explanation. The low shows what we're looking at. It's kind of, if the inflation goes up, interest rates go up. As I was talking, they might raise the interest rates and so that, you know, a lot there. But if that were to occur and there was a lower yield rate for new housing, somewhere more in the range of about a quarter of a student per unit, this would typically offset what would be a natural decline. The housing, new housing would offset. So what we see in the low production is a fairly flat production in terms of enrollment. But the most likely or moderate projection that we just looked at was we've seen, you know, steady inflation and interest rates. So similar to what we have in the current market. So if that were to continue over the next 10-year period. With a moderate yield rate for new housing, somewhere in the 5.5 to 5.6 student per unit. And we would see obviously that increase in student enrollment. We saw an increase of 262 students in that most likely protection based on what we're seeing in terms of new housing development and what there, what potential there may be in that next 10-year window. And then with the high projection, we're looking at typically the lower inflation and interest rates than what we're seeing in the current market and a moderate yield rate for new housing. So a little bit higher than what we see, 0.75 student per unit, which would also result in an increased student enrollment. If we go to the next slide, we have a low, as I said, you know, fairly flat. Increase of less than 1%, you know, 25 students increase over the 10-year period. And if we go to the next slide, with the district-wide high with an increase of about 14%, this would take us to just over 3,700 students in the, in the 10th year for that enrollment. The next slide, just in terms of some conclusions and things to think about. Obviously, watching what the birth counts are and what the resulting kindergarten enrollment is. They mentioned this year, or the 2014, the last year available, birth was among the lowest that we've seen over the 15-year period. So it would, you know, think in that 2019, 20 school year, might see a dip in terms of some of that kindergarten enrollment unless new housing offsets that. Also wanted to take a look at just what your overall elementary school enrollment is doing, you know, is that going to be an indicator of future projection? Looking at any additional job creation in the area that would also spur new development and what the relationship is between the new housing development and the students and what those yield factors are. As I mentioned, counties are ranged of yield factors from a 0.25 yield to 0.75 yield. And where that will fall. Know that there have been, you know, some, you know, look backs in terms of other housing developments that's occurred in the district and what those yields are and they've kind of ranged within that. And some cases have exceeded. So that, you know, something that you want to continue to monitor. And then any other changes that may impact enrollment? If there is, you know, a local private or local school that closes or there are things, you know, that are happening that may impact the enrollment. There's program change, other things that you want to monitor that they may have an impact to. So it's, you know, the projections, you know, measure a point in time and, you know, are based on the best available data at that point in time. But certainly, they're, you know, a fluid thing. So as, as variables change, you're, you know, those things need to be taken into consideration as time moves forward. So with that, I thank you and open it up for questions.
Mr. Leach?
The question I had was in regards to the enrollment projection considerations is housing sales included. I saw new development, but what about housing sales?
Did you hear that?
I did hear that one. Thanks, Dave. Yes, housing sales are considered. And if we look at the, going back to the survival ratios, because the movement of any new students into the district through the housing sales would be measured within those survival ratios. So that's how we track that. Because it's really difficult to track that any other way. I mean, you basically would have to survey every person in the district that bought a house to find out what that yield is. But it is tracked through, you know, the students are counted for through the survival ratios in the housing sales.
Mr. Halden?
What numbers did she come up with for each? What numbers did she come up with for each new proposed development? And where did she, what formula did she use to calculate that?
The question was what, what formula did you use to calculate increases due to new developments and what would be projected to those?
Okay. What I looked at was kind of a combination of the cohort survival method of measuring the rate of movement of students and then adjusted projection ratios based on this for the new housing. So I wanted, so it wasn't like a straight formula that said, okay, based on this housing development, we're going to get, you know, 50 students. And based on this one, we're going to get 75 students. What I didn't say was that, looking at the Saratoga Green example, I projected that there could be at the 0.25 range because of apartments that typically generate less students per unit. And based on some of those being studio and one-bedroom apartments and et cetera. So that would, you know, equate to 126 students roughly. And then for the Spring Valley Farms, looking at that, using more closer to that 0.75 ratio, which would be about 130 students or so. But I didn't just simply add that on top of the enrollment because we needed to also account for that movement of students year to year, grade to grade and where, where some bubbles may be and where that is. So it kind of did, it's not like just a straight formula in terms of it, but more of, you know, a combination, more kind of an art and a science, if you will, in terms of putting those together. So I looked at, you know, the straight numbers in terms of what may be generated, but then kind of folded that into that cohort survival method, measuring, measuring that change over time.
Mr. Bens?
You may have looked, answered this already, but going back to the, to the question of how you calculated these numbers, did you take the developers' estimates of children into account in these calculations?
Did you take the developers' calculations on the student population into consideration in your calculation?
Certainly, that, that information was provided to me and I looked at that data. I feel that, you know, those, you know, I, I mean, I can filter that information, but as I said, I had used a higher calculation, especially for the Spring Valley Farms than what they projected.
That's actually was, I just wanted to ask you to clarify then. Did, since you did have access to that information, you're saying you estimated a higher number of students than the developers, particularly at Spring Valley, but also at Saratoga Green?
So, did you hear that?
I heard, I heard part of it. Can you repeat that, the end of it?
In taking the developers' information into consideration, Mr. Zedewitz is just verifying that you used a larger, you yielded a larger percentage, a larger number of students than the new housing developments that made it.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you say what percentage higher you, you were than the developers? I think Lower Potsgrove Township should have this information.
I would have to go back and look. I don't, I don't have that just right off the top of my head.
Any other questions, discussion?
There's two developments in consideration here, which is Saratoga Green and Spring Valley. But yet, over the last couple of days, I have driven by the Sprawls Run, which I thought was defunct. But it appears to be under construction. They are prepping that land for development. So was that taken into consideration at all? It... No, no, it's not. No, this is not. This is a different one. It's right, it's right near. Yeah, not the rental, which was something Circle or something. No, Sproglis Run is the property in front of that, that actually orders Gilbert's Hill Road. And that is all within the last couple of days. They've got, they're clearing the land, they've got the big barriers up, they've got the, like, the surveyors' flags and stuff. I didn't know if that was something that was taken into consideration.
We contacted Upper Pots Grove, that wasn't one of the developments that they identified as being forthcoming. So I don't know, I'll certainly inquire about that to the township.
That may be Douglas Township.
I was thinking that too, that maybe, because it's really weird, the property lines there, the township lines are very strange there.
Anything else from the board? Do you want to open it up to the public? Sure. Do you want to? What year did you use for the, for the two projects to come on stream?
Question was, what year do you anticipate the housing, the students to arrive and become new housing developments?
We looked at that kind of occurring over, you know, within a two to three-year period over the remaining 10-year period of time. So as those units get built, typically you see like a lifetime of a development, you know, a building permit being issued, and then a student showing up roughly a year, you know, a year in the next school year.
That being said, there are some students projected to arrive within the 17, '18 school year.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
So 17, '18?
Some will start in 17, '18, and then it will rise over the years, according to the projections. Now, obviously, if they don't start construction until '18, '19, it'll push back the projections.
Okay, okay, so I can't take the difference between 17, '18, and say that's, you know, attribute that to the housing development. I guess spread it out over three, four years.
The question was, can we take the shame between '16 and '17, and '17, '18, and attribute that to the development? Or is the student increase factored in?
It's factored in, the increase from new housing development is factored in over the 10-year projection, and really for next year, that increase is primarily due to students moving through, you know, as they move in grades. So as we look back at, you know, this year, kindergarten is being higher, and some of the elementary being higher than the high schools moving out, we're going to see some increase just simply as more students move out and new students move in, so that'll be part of it as well, if that natural movement.
I'm just going to break in here. I used the power of Google to answer the Sproglis Run question. There's a 2015 article in which Upper Pots Grove approved 58 units for Sproglis Run, 29 in the first phase and 29 in the second. They'd be single-family homes, I believe. So I'm not, I wonder why they didn't provide that.
Well, there is, if you referred back to your presentation, there is a 58-unit development that they said was on the books, but had not had any approvals yet. At that point in time, it had not.
This is 2015.
But there are multiple levels of approval before you can get to construction.
I get that, but according to construction, sorry.
I drive past it every day. It changed a lot over the last week.
And where are things at with the old orchards?
I spoke with the township manager for Lower Pots Grove, and first off, a large chunk of the orchard property is in Hannover Township, I believe, so only the frontage is on our property. But at this point in time, there's been no action, no developer has expressed interest in the property yet. Okay, seeing no more questions. Tracy, thank you very much for your information, and if we have any more questions as we go through the process, we'll get back and talk with you.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Dave?
Good night.
A question for you, or maybe Operations or somebody. What are the building capacities?
Building capacities are defined in different ways. Certainly, PDEs, concept of building capacities are greater than how many kids are actually in the building. I don't have that information, but I will get it for next week.
Actually, I wanted to piggyback on that one. When I was looking through the enrollment projections, particularly at Lower Pots Grove, I saw a peak of 816 students in 2021 or '22, I don't remember the year. And knowing, having just graduated from Lower Pots Grove at around 750, what are your thoughts on our ability to handle even that large an increase in that particular school?
Well, we have identified two buildings as being our biggest pressure points. One is Lower Pots Grove Elementary School, the other is the middle school. You'll see that there's even larger increases for the middle school in some of the years. Now that we have this information, we actually have a meeting scheduled with the building principals on the 7th to discuss the change, the potential changes in enrollment, and to try and start the thought process of how to accommodate those students if this enrollment comes our way. But certainly, one major possibility out there is that we may need to add space, whether it be in the form of temporary classrooms or permanent structure at one or both of those buildings.
Well, my big concern about that, I mean, adding classroom space, well, that's a calculable cost, right? You know, we could convert the portico to classroom space, that was one of the ideas I've seen. My concern is whether the infrastructure of the school itself can accommodate that number of students. For example, you know, getting them through the lunchroom in a timely way, just that's that's a simple amount.
We need to look at all aspects of the program.
Because it's pretty tight now, there, so getting another 60, 70 students could be a chore.
Physical question in regards to West. Back in, before the centers, there was 454 some-odd students, now there's 293 some-odd students. What are we doing with that extra space?
Currently, we have several classrooms rented to the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for some of their early intervention classes and special needs classrooms. But there is capacity there that we could shift more students to that building if that's our desire.
What, sorry, Joseph. Yeah, so what would be our plan then, in the very near future, to compare our numbers with Lower Pots Grove's people's numbers?
If the board grants me the authority, I would go to a future board meeting and present them with a copy of this report, and express what concerns we may have.
Do you need a motion?
Just a directive would be fine.
Okay, well, I support that direction.
Joseph?
Question, one minute.
Yeah.
Al mentioned the centers, so I think it's fair to bring it up. Has the move to the centers, given the new population projections that we're expecting, actually complicated or exacerbated our problem?
The move to centers did a couple of things. One, it allowed us to do full-day kindergarten, okay? So that was certainly a positive step for Pots Grove. It also consolidated all the 3 through 6th grade teachers in one building, which allowed to us to more easily balance the student population. The bottom line is, the majority of the new students are coming from the eastern edge of the district, which would all feed into either Lower Pots Grove Elementary School or Ringing Rocks Elementary School, no matter what. So certainly, Lower is closest to capacity at this point in time, and that's going to be our biggest pressure point, but I'm not certain it wouldn't have been the largest pressure point prior to that, if we're adding every, all the student population from the eastern end of the district.
Thank you.
Okay. What is the next steps where we're going to use this material, where we just want to wait and see what happens?
No, like I said, next week, we're going to have a conversation with our staff to see what, we can start a process for breaking it down, grade by grade, and seeing what potential impact it's going to have on our program, what space needs we will have, what additional teaching needs we may have as a result of this, and whatnot. As we work through that process, then we'll come up with a grander idea of what we're going to need to do, and at that point in time, we'll come back, probably through the facilities and operations committee, to discuss what we think the potential impacts of this are. Certainly, if we come in at the lower end of the projection, the issues aren't as severe. If we come in at the moderate level, which is what we're going to use as our planning level, they're significant, but maybe not insurmountable. If we come in at the higher level, you know, we're going to have some challenges.
What then would be, say, a lead time? Obviously, this is all, we're hoping lower enough, but is it like two years in advance we need to know, two years in advance if we're going to be renting in plans for buildings? Or are we looking at, we're pretty good, we're pretty safe, and we could probably construct something within relatively quick lead time frame?
I think if you look at it, the pressure points, the biggest pressure points hit in about four years, four to six years. So we have a little bit of time to plan for that if we can, if we make a determination in the near future. My goal is, I think, if we could have a, kind of like a plan, I haven't talked to Dr. Schirck about this, but maybe by the start of school next year, have it vetted out, and come up with an idea of what we think we can do versus what we think we need to add structurally to accommodate these steps. It might be soon, but it won't give us a little bit of time to do our due diligence.
And I think that, as Dave mentioned, the first start is next week, when we have an opportunity to break down individual buildings, and to talk to those principals about what's available, what's currently available as far as space goes. Obviously, we know what some space, we have some space of West. What's Rocks passing because of this, where East and Heavy, and do we have any space, you know, question mark at Lower, as far as, you know, that piece? And then, of course, obviously, it's a trickle-down for the middle school, so we want to get it firsthand. Really, I think that our building principal would be our first step of answering some of those questions. And Dave, if there's any delay, obviously, that keeps moving.
Correct.
You know, so it could be a moving target for us, that we'd have to continually monitor as we go through the process.
Dr. Schirck, I would just ask that while you're going through that process, that you take a hard, realistic look at how things are now, particularly at Lower, but also at the middle, you know, beyond just the capacity of the classrooms themselves, you know, because I think that's an area where I know I've heard from parents, and I've witnessed myself, that it's strained, to say the least, now. So, you know, I think it's important for us to be realistic about where we might be, and I just ask that you come to us with, you know, scenarios that maybe we don't want to hear, but maybe we need to hear.
Yep.
Dr. Schirck, if we have to shift students, is that a redistricting scenario, or is this something less formal than that?
Not necessarily, and I think that's sort of, that's one of our first steps, when we meet with the principals, to take a look at, obviously, the infrastructure, as I just mentioned, I think that's key. And then, that would be a recommendation from us to come back to the board with, if we have to draw the line, you know, closer, closer east, if you will, where more students would end up going to West. You know, ultimately, you know, we have to, that would be something we bring to the board, because that affects community, so.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
I might just add on to that last comment. Just want to add on to that last comment, thank you. You know, anything to that effect that's brought to this board, I think it's safe to say would be, is basically saying it's being brought to the community. We would certainly want to be hearing from the community, and not a decision that we would take lightly at all, is where, my perspective, and I think, safe to say for the board.
Okay, we'd like to move on with our meeting to have action items for personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to include 5.1 through 5.8 and 5.9, only excluding 5.10, including 5.10, only excluding 5.9. 5.1 through 5.8 and 5.10.
And we'll have 5.2.
5.2?
Okay.
We'll have 5.2.
5.1, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8. 5.2's out.
5.2's out, 5.10's out. 11, I think, is empty. That's just actually, so.
And 5.6, can we just, I'll just go now, I'm going to keep them individual.
Just go through them, let's just go through them one by one now.
Just as quick.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to start with 5.1. Our recommendations to prove administrative staff appointment as submitted.
Sub move. Second. Motion in a second?
Congratulations.
Any questions? There's a motion in a second, so I'm just asking if we have any questions or comments. Most? Bush and Carries.
Like to welcome Anthony Becker to board. Congratulations, Tony. Professional staff leave. We make a recommendation to prove the professional staff leave of absence as submitted.
Give it up the microphone, let me know if you can't hear me. We have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Question?
It's not working good tonight. I don't know if it's something I can ask here, if I can ask a general question in regards to long-term subs, taking 12 weeks of medical leave, we have two this time, it just struck me as odd, because it's, should I say, a temporary position as it is. Could I get a little more information on that?
I don't really, at this point, you know, they have that ability to take that leave, so we wouldn't deny that, so.
Does the 12-week, do we know, if you don't know offhand, obviously, that's fine. But I wonder if the, how long the long-term sub is for, or is that typically for the school year?
A long-term sub would be either for the school year or for 90 days, so that would be a long-term per diem sub. They would fall into the X amount. They would fall into the X amount of days at 100, X amount of days at 110, X amount of days, if they would be in a position for more than 30 days, then it would be the bachelor's of one rate. So that could occur for that particular, those particular spots, but it's not going to be a long-term sub with benefits or part benefits or anything like that.
I think a legitimate question here is, is this leave available to them under FMLA? Or under district policy? Or under our union contract? Those are the three possibilities. Which one?
Family medical.
Family medical.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, there's no other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Motion carries.
Professional staff appointment, we recommend you approve the professional staff appointments as submitted.
Sub move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Motion carries.
No relation, right.
Miscellaneous staff appointment, we recommend you approve miscellaneous staff appointment as submitted.
Sub move.
Second. Motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Motion carries.
5.5, support staff resignation, we ask you to approve this resignation as submitted.
Sub move.
Second. Motion and a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Motion carries.
5.6, classification change, we recommend that you approve this classification change as submitted.
Sub move.
Second. Any questions?
Question. The position was previously held by contracted staff and now changed, so why the difference, and what is the difference as far as, as far as its effect on us? It's not going to, I'm going to vote yes, I'm just curious, you can get back to me on that later if you'd like to, that's fine.
David, any particular comment you could add to that at this point without getting, talking-
I would be guessing.
Say.
Let me verify it.
That's fine, I don't need it for my vote.
Okay.
All in favor then?
Aye.
Most? Motion carries.
Support staff appointments, we ask you to please approve the support staff appointments as submitted.
Sub move.
Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Right, motion carries.
5.8, student-teacher placement, we ask that you approve the student-teacher placement as submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Motion carries.
Miscellaneous supplemental special payment appointments, we ask that you approve the supplemental special payments appointments as submitted.
Sub move.
Second. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Most?
Thanks, Patty.
Motion carries, eight yeses and one abstention.
We ask that you approve the revised job descriptions as submitted and 5.10.
Sub move.
Second. Motion and a second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to action items for business, we ask that you approve the construction invoice for the Pott's Grove High School renovation project as presented.
Sub move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions?
Yeah, I got just a simple question here. Alice, the finish is $3,000, why didn't we just throw that in?
We didn't have all the paperwork presented, so we're not going to pay until they present the invoice for payment.
Do they have any pending work?
The plumbing contractor has been off-site for quite some time, their, for all intents and purposes, complete.
100% finished?
Yes.
They didn't have anything to do with the HVAC?
Well, if there's changes to the HVAC that require plumbing, they may have to come back, but they've completed their work-
Okay.
-appropriately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Motion carries.
Number seven, action items for education, we ask that you approve the conference attendance as submitted.
Sub move.
Second. Motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Most?
7.2, conference attendance, we ask that you approve this conference attendance as requested and submitted.
Sub move.
Second. And a motion and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? Any questions, carries?
Action items for policies, we ask the board to approve the new policies as submitted.
Sub move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I have one question, but does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I had just one simple question. In the live-stream video part, it talks about the camera use. Is camera going to be sort of like all-encompassing, phones, cameras, GoPros, the computers, anything at all, that could be electronically recording anything? Yes.
I'll just comment back, yes, that we did discuss that, that specific piece in the policy committee, and it's meant to cover any kind of recording, live-stream work, post-live. My comment was just that I always like to check beforehand when we approve these policies, but do we have any public feedback on either of these two during the 30-day?
We did not.
Okay. Any more comments or questions?
I would just like to say concerning the live-streaming for homebound instruction, we, I, it would have been wonderful when my son was home after his multiple surgeries to have had that, and I'm just really happy you guys, that you guys included that, because that can make a huge difference for a student that's at home recovering from anything, you know, for any long period of time, so it's just, it would have been a huge help in his case, and rather than paying, you know, and having tutors coming in after school and stuff like that, you know, so, I'm just very happy to see that happening.
That's great.
I haven't read the policies, are there any that would prevent your friendly newspaper newspaper reporter from live-streaming video saying, do you want to know?
All right, should we hold this policy then, Nick? Because I would say no.
Or your newspaper reporter said, "I'm friends."
I think there's a disclaimer, I think, isn't there?
It's got Evan's name on it. It's a disclaimer. It's for classroom, for, during school time.
Thank you.
Another question that came up during that, during the discussion at policy committee though, yeah, we did talk about these meetings, sporting events, things like that, but this is specifically for classroom time during the school day.
Thank you, sir.
I do have one other question that I just thought of. I didn't see it in the, in the policy, I think I actually saw it as being excluded. For students, like the homeschooling students and stuff like that, I think we're not going to keep the videos, is that correct? So if you have a student that missed it for whatever reason, they're not going to be able to go back a week, is that correct? We're not going to keep the stream?
No. It's just a live? I'd always said we weren't going to- Right, it's live only. Yeah, live only. No recording. Correct. That was not brought up. No, right.
Was that brought up? Because I would think that would be something would be very beneficial to students that are either sick, homeschooled, I mean, there's many different reasons. I could say, again, I hate to use my experiences, but a lot of colleges record all of the classes, and then students then consider, hey, I forgot what, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Smith went over on, you know, third period three weeks ago, and they can look back and see it. Has that been considered?
Containing, cataloging, and-
Right. That could be a, this was-
Just a cliche.
Yeah. I think that's a separate policy.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, the policy doesn't address whether we can or can't.
Okay. So we actually something to board off of the new policy, if we, if we want-
Right, or just the operating construction.
I will say, in other instances of homebound instruction that I've been told about, where this kind of live-streaming was used, usually it was a student carrying a laptop with them during the day, and just when they'd sit down, they'd flip it around, and there, the student at home was able to just follow along with the class. So that, that's what I was told about. My niece did that up in LaGuardia High School in New York when she was out after a surgery, so, it's like, man, what a great idea.
Are we ready?
Was this, was this policy reviewed by the attorneys? Just to make sure they didn't have any questions or concerns? Okay.
It's also reviewed by PSBA, too. They're, they're, they're-
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Most? Great.
This is Graham, joint operating.
Thank you. I don't have a full report, so I'm going to do that the first meeting of it each month, but I do have a couple of updates that we're kind of excited for. Is this coming Monday is going to be our JOC meeting, and we're actually having a Mexican buffet. In the past, I told you, we've had dinners that have sold out, seven in a row. We actually have to turn people away, we can't, we can't even, you know, fill the seats. So Mexican week is, our dinner buffet is going to be this week, and the kids have been really busy making the menu, homemade chips, they're doing Mexican rice, and it's not just a buffet, these kids actually are learning more of the specific culinary arts, the arts of it. So it's $13, and it's from 4:30 to 7:00, and our meeting starts at 7:00, and we invite everybody to come to our meetings, and, Monday, Monday, I'm sorry, it will be March the 6th. We're very excited to bring everybody, essentially, we have four students that were announced today, going to do a pilot program with Chick-fil-A Academy, and it's a great opportunity for our students to kind of learn the business and ordering food, customer relations, and so we're really excited about that. And then, in May, we're coordinating a high tea event, so they're always working, there's always something going on over there. I really would like to shout out to the, to the Western Center, because they are taking these kids above and beyond. You know, sometimes they're overlooked, but they are, they're doing amazing things, and I'm just very, very proud of them, so, next meeting.
Can I add?
Sure.
I'm trying to thumb through a Facebook page. Thank you. I'm trying to thumb through the Facebook page, and I can't find it fast enough, but I know that Mr. Morrison posted on the PGSD discussion page, maybe, maybe the high school discussion page, too-
I don't feel one.
About the middle school, and I got a mailer home, a postcard mailer about the summer camps that they had offered. I would encourage everybody to just check out what the offerings are, I know-
That'd be on my full report.
They did, they did add like a sports-
Yes.
Sports fitness program this year for-
Arts, data, auto.
Yep, there's an arts, a culinary arts, an auto, I mean-
Psychology.
Great summer camps, open to anyone.
Fifth and eighth grade students, but I'll do that on my full report next week.
Okay. I don't know how fast they fill up, that's why I just wanted to mention it.
I have it here. Registration forms are available now, grades five through eight, offered to all students, and then there's session dates, so you're going to report out on that next week, but the sessions run in the middle of July, it looks like. All of them are July 10th through July 14th, and there's a sports performance, and there's a couple of others here, so.
Can I just clarify back up just for a second in regards to the policy of live-streaming? I just want to be clear, the policy, I checked, is very clear, no recordings will occur on either event, either end of the live-stream, just want to clarify that.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the other committee items. That's correct.
The facilities and operations committee met on 2/14, and we have a report.
We don't, I missed it, because I was here, I missed the time, so, actually, it was run by the president.
Oh, that was the budget committee.
Yeah. So it was five minutes for facilities.
Just update the public, at our last facilities and operations committee, we spent, you know, over an hour, just basically, Mr. Nestor gave a budget presentation on the projections for 2017, 18, and we did spend a little bit of time talking about capital improvements at the middle school, and to think about, the committee was asked to think about some of the ways that we should move forward with that capital project, and they will be forthcoming, you know, in the next couple of months as far as recommendations for the middle school. Mr. Carwell, anything you would want to add regarding that piece?
The other piece was that Mr. Nestor and I developed a list of error and omissions from the change orders that we'll be presenting to the, to the board for the next committee meeting to review our errors, areas that we believe should be further into.
Thank you, Mr. Carwell. Curriculum and technology, we have a report from them from our February 21st meeting.
So this was our big meeting that will be coming to the board in the future time in regards to the change in the curriculum. I want to point out that we had over 100 of teachers and staff that actually were involved with creating and doing curriculums, and we actually had over 40 teachers actually at our meeting this past Tuesday that came, and the discussion was very lively, back and forth, we were able to get all, everything down to exactly what was going on and such. So I'm going to break this, it's like eight, nine pages here, so I'm going to break this down. There were a few negotiables, non-negotiables, and stuff like that, and in essence, it came down to, for mathematics, the team wanted to go with the Pearson invisions for, that's mathematics, nine through 12. For nine through 12, for ELA, the teachers felt that we had the curriculum that was needed. For grades six through eight in mathematics, it's still pending, they do know that they're going to want to change the curriculum, but they just haven't decided on the exact version of the curriculum. They know they want to work with, obviously, being in the middle, they need to work with the high school and with the elementary schools, so they're going to be working still on the mathematics. As for the six to eight ELA, you got my perspectives from Pearson. For K through five mathematics, it's going to be Math in Focus, I think this is, I think some people are very happy, as this is going to be the end of EDM, so there will be no more EDM, and obviously, I didn't already say it, but Carnegie Math is also going to be out come next year, so your students, well, not you, Mason, you may be happier. All right, as for K through five ELA, it's going to be Reading Wonders, and a lot of other things. Now, there were multiple board members besides the commission that was here, we all, commission and committee, as we all unanimously agreed to send it to the board with our recommendation, this will come in the future, we just want to get things nailed down, and stuff like that, there is a cost, it's going to look like a much higher cost than it's actually going to be, there's a lot of, just front numbers coming up, I'm not going to bother giving them out now, because there's lots of negotiations, there's lots of things that we're going to work with, different things like that, so that'll all come to the meeting probably March timeframe, beginning to the end of March timeframe.
Can you just clarify the numbers, Dr. Sherk, if you can clarify that whatever numbers we're looking at is budgeted for, in this year's and next year's budget, correct? Proposed budget?
Yeah, we're going to, we're working on that piece with the vendors right now, to see how we can, you know, make it work with the, this year's numbers and next year's numbers, and- next year's numbers and if we can't, we'll come back and, you know, obviously alert the Board and talk to the Board about our recommendations and making, making it work. But that's our first, the first thing we want to do is to talk to the vendors and basically get an accurate price, if you will, for, for all the different levels and all the different programs and then see how that fits into the budget. And that's coming up shortly.
One other piece I forgot, Bill, because I had to note real quick, I forgot to mention it. It was mentioned and I, we didn't have time to fully discuss it and we'll bring it up probably at a later time. One of the teachers did ask us about the ELA as in, we don't have specific class in K, in high school for the below level, just the basic academic and the higher, we don't have anything for below. That's been something that we can discuss in the future, of course, but that's, like I said, it's going to be forward. I do have something else for new business that was mentioned, but I'm going to bring the new business for that.
Okay.
The Policy Committee met, I'd say they met tonight, but we also met on the twenty fourth of January and tonight we would like this, the Board to accept the minutes of the Policy Committee for January twenty fourth, two thousand seventeen as submitted. Second. Okay, motion and a second to accept the minutes of the Policy Committee meeting. Any questions there? Break. No, okay. All right, good. It's all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Yep, to new business? New Business?
I had two things. First thing I wanted to bring up was unfortunately I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I didn't get a chance to say, unfortunately, Mr. Durensa has already left for the day, but from speaking with him and many other of our staff that were here, the district duels that we had went off with a unbelievable success, I believe. I think I heard nothing but rave reviews of how the operations was held here, everything was, everybody left very happy. As for the public, as in when I said about how we're working on, the Booster Club is working on raising approximately four thousand dollars to put in a new snacks and we were halfway there just from that one event, as in we netted over two thousand dollars. The second thing, actually, new business, I was hoping for discussion, was something that was brought up during the Curriculum Committee that, and no one really understands why it stopped, it was fifteen years ago, as in to the teachers were wondering, just something, they would bring graduates back and the graduates would be able to either discuss the different things, sort of similar to what Ashley had said at the last meeting about bringing the students back. They would come into class and they would say the different things of how the education has gone and how they feel it's prepared them for college and at the exact same time though, they were also offering the students to ask them all kinds of questions. They could ask them with time management, obviously parties is something they usually asked about, but there's a lot of other educational areas they asked about, asking to what's life like different than high school up to the college timeframe? That's something that I would like to see if we could actually bring back to Potts Grove. Obviously, they used to do it in January, obviously January is coming past, that's when the kids were off. Obviously, we know the kids get out early May and if that's available or if it has to go back to maybe committee meetings for a future event to discuss during our Student Affairs portion, I'd be more than willing to bring that up as one of our committee previous, committee subjects, but I wanted to bring that to the Board as possible discussion.
One of these is, sorry, I just wanted to, I think part of the discussion was also that when, if I understood correctly, when the students came back, they were also meeting with the teachers to let them know.
Correct.
What, you know, in their class they liked, what in class helped them or did not help them, so you need feedback to the teachers, so it wasn't just for the students.
I was just going to, I'll just piggyback off that. I would, I would like to see it as, you know, a culmination of, of, you know, sort of gathering information and helping and, you know, sort of guiding the future graduates and being able to answer questions of the younger kids, but yet at the same time, help the district sort of, you know, see maybe where they fall short or maybe where they're doing a great job and deserve a pat on the back, something like that. It's just always nice to get feedback from kids who are now out there using the skills they learned here and, and can say, hey, you know, this was great, you know, I'm so happy I started school with this or, hey, you know, this is something that somehow, you know, was glossed over. So I would just really like to see that if possible.
Was this day typically like at the end of the school year or the beginning of the school year?
January, usually in the past. That was fifteen years ago, so it's, it'd be.
Well, the only, the only thing I, I, I love the idea, but I would hate to take prime instruction time away from, from the student schedules, thinking of students who are prepping for an AP exam and, and the like, so, you know, but maybe it would be possible to bring them in, in that period of time in between our finish and when the students finish college at the end of the year. Also, that would give you a full year's worth of information because they would have finished that first year. So I'm thinking like at the end of May or early June as opposed to January. Can I? Can I, Dr. Mace Coleman, I saw you nodding back there, I was wondering if you may have a chance to answer the question that Mr. Ravinamit's had.
It occurred at the end of the first semester of college students, generally speaking, within the first two weeks of January, so before our interns. The students who came back were recruited, were invited and the guidance department was involved in that. And then they visited different classes, so it didn't necessarily take away from, for any length of time, it didn't take away from any of the instruction that was going on. It added an experience to the class.
Fair enough.
And they generally, they went to classes that wanted the students to visit, so if the teacher had an activity, a performance task, app, a test, and students didn't speak at that time, but it was a general meeting, the kids would call together for a short time and then the, the college students broke off to individual classes. Mostly it was with our juniors and our senior, you know, science teachers and sometimes I think some social studies teachers.
If the Board feels the directive is, you know, worthy, I would like to take it back to the Curriculum Committee and see if we can work something out.
It's a great idea.
I have just a quick thing. I today went to the middle school where my son and all the sixth graders participated in the, what they're, what they call the First Annual Wax Museum and all the students did extensive research and, and a project that included them acting as, as a famous individual from history. There were a lot of sports figures, my son was Lou Gehrig, there was a Babe Ruth and a lot of basketball players, Michael Jordan, but other people in history like Milton Hershey and, and all manner of famous people. It was a nonfiction reading assignment, initially, and I just wanted to, first of all, say that, that it was, that the students did really impressive jobs, you know, under stress, you know, their parents were recording them while they were doing their, their presentations. It was just a really nice hour, a little less than an hour spent at, at the school and, you know, my son came home very enthused about how his hard work paid off and wanted to give a shout out to all the people in the middle school, particularly in the ELA Department that, that put this together. I think it's a winner and I have a feeling it will be an annual event from here on. And it was also really nice, I will add, to have so many parents participating and a fast track in and out of the school. It was just very well managed, so kudos to everybody involved.
I just wanted to mention that last, Tuesday, was it Tuesday was the Board luncheon?
Yeah.
Last Tuesday, yeah, I should remember that, lost my car keys. Last Tuesday was the student Board rep luncheon with our reps and Springfield Ford and Pottstown and they all came to and we actually ate right there, right? Wasn't it in that room? They had it closed off.
I was in the, the library.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, in the library.
Anyway, I, it was really, really nice and I was really proud of Mason and Maya. They did a fantastic job, sort of. They were sort of like the, the host and co-host of the day. They asked lots of questions and the other reps were very open and gave just lots of great information and I know Springfield showed an interest of hosting next year and it was just a really nice, really nice day. Mr. Durensa did a great job planning it and I just felt that, you know, we see Mason and Maya here just, you know, giving their report and that's about it, but boy, when they were in with their peers, you know, we, I saw why they sit there, you know, I saw why they were chosen because they did a fantastic job and I was very proud of them.
I just want to say that we're definitely going to like go into more detail in terms of what we discussed, but overall it was just a really good experience. We're all on really good terms in terms of Springfield and Pottstown and we're even planning to possibly collaborate, so thank you for that opportunity.
I just want to kind of say, I, I was also in attendance and it was blown away by these kids. I mean, you know, I think the intimidation, they're having lunch, all but one student kept eating, you know, but there amongst all the administrators, all the, you know, and they're, they're, they're holding themselves so well, you did such an awesome job. But we talked a little about collaboration, how the different school districts could get together and some of the students are going to get together and help me with the drug task force. We're going to visit Upper Perk and, you know, with heroin addiction and opiums and things like that and all the kids were so excited to jump on board this, but, but they were just beautiful ladies and gentlemen, they were just awesome, so you did a good job.
Thank you, everyone. Anything more for new business? So we want to move into answers to previous inquiries? Yes, thank you. We just wanted to, just to really, the, the alumni survey, I just wondered, I know Mrs. Custer, you asked those questions from last meeting and I think we'll just wrap that, that piece up, but we, we, the answer, the answer is no, we, we currently don't do anything, but we do have a Family Connection portal that does ask questions, you know, regarding college work and military. So that, that can be something we can, we can piggyback on, you know, with, with the committee, with the other things, you know, Alumni Week and the, the gathering of information for our teachers and students, I think that can all be wrapped up into one pack, we talked about under Student Affairs with that.
I just have a question on that. One of the things that, it's been on my mind, I keep getting to bring up and it comes down to like the alumni is, have we not had a scheduled date for the open house yet? Because I think that would be a perfect opportunity to invite alumni to come back. So, you know, we have this beautiful school and I haven't heard anything about an open house, so I just wonder where we stand on that.
Great, great question.
Do you have a thought?
No, no we don't, actually, because, you know, Mr. Nestor and I is, you know, with tongue in cheek have tried, we, we, we started this process back in the fall with our contractors to try to come up with, we came up with several dates, late fall, before the holiday and that's one of the reasons why we're still talking about this after an executive session about potential litigation. We just didn't have the building where we wanted it to, to open up, you know, for, for public. So as soon as we feel, we're getting closer, but I think we have a couple more hurdles, so once we do, we'll, we'll make that, that grand entrance and have a, the river cutting.
Bring everybody back home.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The next question, I had an opportunity to share information with the Board regarding substitute information, I really just wanted to share that information with the public tonight. It's really, you know, in response to the district's substitute shortage and I'd compiled much information, you know, for the Board, I just really put it, put it back out, we're still in the process of, of gathering some information as well, you know, as far as that piece is concerned. I'm looking for a little direction from the Board if they want more specific information regarding, regarding this. I have explored several other, you know, several other pieces to this regarding ways we spend money currently for helping our, our current colleagues out when we, when teachers take extra students on in their classrooms or teachers cover during preps, we have some information there, so, and we also continue to look at teacher attendance as a big factor in why, why at times we don't have coverage. So I just wanted to, before I moved really any further, I was just looking for some direction for the Board if you want me to continue to dive into this, but I, I think that we do at this point do our due diligence when it comes to, you know, going to different functions, job fairs, interviewing people throughout the year and what happens is at times the turnover is such that we, we hire someone in the substitute role and then all of a sudden they're put in a permanent role and it depletes our sub, our sub, you know, piece. So there's, there's, again, I'm looking for direction, if the Board would like me to go a little bit deeper, some of those, some of those things would be salary, that was mentioned before, what that would cost, salary with other different employee groups, so I just wanted to know, because it'll be, it'll, it'll take some time, we can, we have the data, but I just was looking for a little direction if the Board wanted me to explore more, more information regarding substitute.
This came up because I brought this up last meeting, two weeks ago, I guess. When we look at the numbers and yes, I agree we're comparable, compatible to other districts, but I think we need to look at those numbers a little deeper as far as what we're compensating the subs because like all districts, we're having sub failures, absolutely, but of course the School Board Administration is focused on what's best for our students and when there is a sub failure, it, it has such a negative impact on so many. Of course, those students, then they get split up and then it affects other classes. But we're compensating our subs while comparable to other districts, yes, when you look at, when you calculate that out to what that would be annually and you look at what we compensate a central office person for a day-to-day types contract situation to what that equals out to annually, there's a huge difference. I think paying a hundred dollars a day, a hundred ten, then a hundred twenty, that equals, I didn't bring many numbers with me, but twenty something thousand a year, I, I think that should say to us, we really need to look at this, especially with the negative impact it has on the students, you know, what can we do? Administration has done a fantastic job in, in really doing, I mean, what more can the Administration do? I think we need to look at the salaries. I had emailed, emailed February eighteenth and I, I guess we're looking for, I don't know why, but I guess we need Board permission. I, I, you know, if anybody has a problem with the questions I asked, then please, please state that here publicly, but the questions I had asked that I would like feedback on is what did we pay last year in compensation to teachers for having extra kids in their room due to a sub failure? Will we, you know, if we go with my proposal as far as compensating subs more appropriately, it's going to cost us, but it also save in a sense, I don't think we're going to save as much as we spend, but there, how often was there a sub failure? We need to see the, really, how big is this impact, you know, been having on our students? And how many days did we need at least one sub? And the reason why I asked that was some districts are going to having. And the reason why I asked that was some districts are going to having a full-time sub on to be put wherever. And would that be cost-effective? I'm not proposing that, I don't know. You know, if it would be cost-effective, great, if not, then, then no. But I don't see any negative, I don't see any reason why any of those questions couldn't have been or can't be answered. If anybody disagrees from the board, please speak up so we can give the administration direction.
So I'll say, you know, first of all, what we try to do is we try to limit the requests for work from the administration to a certain amount of time that they put in regarding individual requests. If we want them to put in more time, then we seek for it to be the will of the board. And we seek for it to be discussed in public forum in order to give them that direction. That said, it's my personal opinion that going after the salary issue shouldn't be the number one priority to try to address this problem. I know that I asked before in the board meeting when we talked about this the first time. For us to better understand how we compare to other districts that are in drivable distance from us. I know personally, you know, this is just me, looking at a road like 422, an extra five, ten, fifteen dollars a day isn't really going to get me to drive two more exits down a crowded 422 when I have the option to work someplace closer to home for that amount of money. It would just be interesting, I think it would be valuable information for us to understand, how do we compare with the other districts in driving distance? Another thing that I think Bill touched on, but I don't know where it went, was the absenteeism trends in our regular full-time teachers. Are they up, are more teachers taking sick days? What's causing us to have this shortage? And instead of just, and, you know, I'm not a proponent of throwing any solution at a problem until we do a proper root cause analysis, but especially when it comes to money. I wouldn't be a supporter of throwing money at a problem before we know what the root cause is. So my, my interest, and again, I'm just wanting this to get, you know, if we want to pursue this, and there's two things, right? Are we, are we in the same situation as every other district and we can't do anything about it other than offer to pay more? Or are we in a worse scenario? And to understand that, if it's gotten worse over the years, why? And what can we do about it? But I think that's, you know, I think that's something that takes time. And I do think that we gave the direction to the administration to go back and find those things for us and continue to report back. I agree that there's a problem, I just like to know where the problem's coming from before, before I agree on how to attack it, that's just me personally.
Well, I think I was pretty clear on that. So do you disagree with the questions I asked the administration? Or can we, as a board, say these are questions we'd like looked into so we can, as you said, you know, make an objective decision?
I disagree with, with, I disagree with us getting involved in having the administration go back and look into it in however way they see fit for a first time around. Because if we have nine different people asking nine different sets of questions, some based on money, some based on absenteeism, then we're, we're breaking up their flow. So my personal preference would be to have them have a go at it and see where it gets us, that's, that's.
Well, and we did multiple times, and they brought that information rightfully, you know, adequately. I mean, they brought that information, I don't know, last year and then just now. So they have done that, they have done a great job with that. And I would like to see a little more information, specifically, what are we spending on compensation? And I agree with you too, if this is something that's not captured and takes weeks and weeks, well, that's a different story. It seems to me it would be captured, but I don't know the accounting system that well. And how often was there a sub failure? Again, the fact that Aesop is done electronically, it seems to me, but could be wrong, that this would be something that's already captured and easy to find. If it's not, I'm all with you. But if it's a simple answer, you know, that can be found easy, I don't see why we're automatically judging that my questions are going to take weeks at a time.
I think the specific questions that you asked are fine, but they're not going to, by themselves, give us a complete idea of what's going on. In other words, you know, we talked about teacher absenteeism, are they clustered around holidays or weekends? And do we have five sub failures on a Friday before a long weekend?
When it's seventy degrees.
When it's seventy degrees outside. So your questions didn't ask that, you just asked, how many failures do we have? You've also got to ask when they are and what is the cause of it.
Then ask. So let's not just ask my questions, then ask the questions.
I'm saying, please administrators, look into this and tell us what we can do, what the issues are that are causing this and what we can do about it. That's how I'd like to handle it.
I'd like to go circle back to the discussion we had at the last meeting in which I think if you're going to look at this, to your point, Dr. Schirr, the issue of substitute teachers is just one, and their compensation, and frankly, in my opinion, a lesser issue than, than the compensation for other substitutes in the district or, you know, whose pay has not moved in many, many years. And while, you know, I actually brought this up with Mrs. Viola last year, asking if raising our rates might impact these, but I guess your term you're using is sub failures. Does that mean there's no sub for a class?
Correct.
Then, you know, the data that I got back led me to believe that probably not, without a significant raise in pay. And as I expressed last time, I'm a hundred percent opposed to a large increase in pay for substitute teachers. I do not want to be at the front of that train for a variety of reasons. I recognize that our subs work very hard and, and they're certified teachers who do important work. But a, but if we, we're at the front of the train and everybody else is just going to follow us and we'll just be in the same shape that we're in currently. So if we need to adjust, great, but, but I want that to be a very measured and considered bit of work from the administration. My preference would be that you look at the, that our, look at our rates for all of our subs relative to the rates that other districts are charging, and the fair market too. And with an eye towards where the larger problem is.
Which they've done multiple times, including this last.
No, they haven't, because they haven't raised the price of substitute custodians and teachers aides in seven years.
Well, my concern wasn't, didn't start with, and I'm not trying to ridicule, my concern didn't, I didn't come in with the concern of our poor substitutes can't make a living. My concern came in with, which could probably is an issue, but my main concern came from our students. So if there's something that we can do, such as compensate, so we're not equivalent to all of the districts, so like Matt says, you know, why would I go an extra five miles or, you know, go down 422 or whatever when I can get paid, you know, five, ten dollars, I mean, who's going to change for that, right? So my, my concern isn't with the staff substitutes as much as it is for the students. Having no teacher in a room for a whole day, I, I don't know, some people think that's not an issue, but that's quite a problem for our students and other students that get affected by it. So why don't we just look at the numbers and not be afraid to look at the numbers and see what it would do if you had this many subs for, you know, the area, not just us? And all the districts are, you know, taking from this small pile, this small group, well, where's this small? Somebody's going to have a sub failure. Our concern can't be with all the districts, right? Or at least not our main concern, our main concern needs to be our students. And if we can, if an issue, if something would help such as not overinflated, right? Not paying them like, why would I ever stop paying a sub, right? But paying them more adequate compared to other districts, why not look at that? Just look, I'm not saying do it, but.
We have looked and we are paying adequate compared to other districts. And if you significantly raise your rates above what other districts are paying, then they're just going to follow suit and will be in no better shape on behalf of the students that you're talking about. That's my opinion.
If I can just say something here. Obviously, the biggest problem that we have here with subs is that there aren't enough, period. We can't generate more subs, we can't pull them out of thin air. Okay, so I think asking the administration to do backflips and do all kinds of extra work when it comes down to they're just not there to be hired, I think that's wasting their time. And I would, I would really like to see them work on other things that, that maybe they can solve. I mean, right now, it seems to me that they're doing everything that they can to get as many subs in here as possible. And to ask them to keep on giving us more and more information about it, I think is a waste of time. Because if the, if the employees aren't out there to be hired, then we can't hire them. And right now, they're not out there to be hired. There's minimal amount of teachers graduating right now. And that just reduces the amount of subs we have, so.
If everybody paid peanuts, because like you say, it's a small pool compared to what, you know, is needed. If everybody paid peanuts and a district said, you know what, we're going to take the lead, we're going to stop paying peanuts, we're going to start paying half of what they should be getting. Is that not worth looking at?
I agree with you, that if we paid more, we would attract more. But the very second we start to pay more, then Boyertown's going to pay more and, oh, and Jay. And, and I'm sorry, Bill, but you need to step back from this. You are a substitute teacher, so you need to step away from this.
I saw that as pleasure, I'm not going to get compensated differently from here. I'll abstain from the vote if necessary.
You sure would, if the other schools stepped forward and followed our suit.
I take offense by that comment. I'm going to put it on the record, I'm making a motion, and everybody's opinion can be on the record, okay? I make a motion that we send to the administration the following questions, two questions. If anybody wants to add questions, so be it, but I want it on the record. I make a motion that we ask the administration, what did we pay last year in compensation to teachers for having extra kids in their room due to a sub failure? Number two, how often was there a sub failure? That's my motion.
There's a second for Bill's motion.
Motion tabled. Second.
You can't table it until it's settled.
Okay.
I'll second Bill's motion.
No, motion tabled.
I'll second that too.
So we have a motion to table. All, any questions or comments?
Especially on a motion to table, if I remember Mark's.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion is tabled. Next slide, please.
The next question was regarding the SPP, and I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that this was brought at the February 14th board meeting to ask about the update for 1670 SPP results. To date, we've received nothing from the Department of Education, so we're waiting to hear from that. And then also from, from the previous meeting, we, we had questions regarding the security camera. And I know Mr. Carwell has worked on the issues with our school resource officers, developing ready responders regarding our cameras and any other emergencies that might occur. And he basically has put that in writing for you. Also, the vendor has resolved all of our issues. So I think the key things there in the paragraphs that he has submitted for us for tonight and for the public are that our school resource officers are involved. He is putting together a group of responders to assist if there is a need for repair. And that our vendor has stepped to the plate to make sure that all of the identified issues at the high school and at the middle school, is that correct, Mr. Carwell?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are, have been taken care of at this time.
Okay, we're moving on to our second spot for public comment. Do we have any public comment on non agenda items that came up tonight? Okay, so at this, this time we'll, we'll adjourn the meeting and move into executive session. Thanks, everyone.